To the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the One Nation Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to remind you to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review down on the end next to Commissioner Karski. And please contact Craig or Carol if you need to use a listening device this morning. So that takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I think we got a motion, a second, and a third probably. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, all opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Second item is to approve the Minnehaha Commission meeting minutes. We have three separate minutes, so I'll take three separate motions. The first is for the Minnehaha County Commission meeting from November 27th.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Second is the joint meeting with the City of Sioux Falls from November 27th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And finally, there is a special Minnehaha County Commission meeting on November 30th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to bills to be paid. We have bills to be paid in the amount of $591,974.73.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Reports. We have three different reports this morning for your review. There's a register of deeds, official statement of revenue collected for October 2018, the Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center report for October 2018, and the Minnehaha County Ambulance Providers Mutual Aid Agreement. Next item is personnel actions. Carrie Dever. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Second.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have the following list of anniversaries for you being celebrated in December. Celebrating five years of service, we have Alan Robinall, who's a correctional officer in the jail, Catherine Knoblock, Daniel Bosman, and Nathaniel Anderson, who are Safe Home Program workers, and Carrie Kohlhoff, who's a curator of collections at the museum. Celebrating 10 years of service, we have Victoria Raker in the Public Advocates Office. And at 25 years of service this month, John Crittentin, who's at the highway. I don't think we have anyone with us this morning.
So we really appreciate all that service. And I think that the next item is that you have a resolution for our consideration?
I do. And I also would like, if I could back up just one step and have you officially record the volunteers for November of 2018. Slightly smaller list, but still impressive at 264 volunteers for the month.
Thank you. That is always very impressive. I'm always impressed by how many volunteers we have that keep our operations moving.
Yeah, several areas of the county. We couldn't do it without them. The last item I have for you is a resolution for elected officials. This is a resolution that you see every December. By statutory regulations, we're required to go ahead and have the resolution passed indicating what the salaries are going to be for those elected department heads. A small change for you to look at, this is just for your consideration. We have an extra week built into this process in case this isn't a format that you like to go with. But I'm recommending considering adding a base level salary for elected officials so that if we have a newly elected individual and you want to look at a rate that's maybe slightly below the rate of the current incumbent who might have several years of experience, this would be an option for you. If you're wondering how I arrived at the recommended amounts and that, you might remember that during the budget process, we look at market pay for our elected officials. And we also look at equity with other staff and other department heads. Taking a look at this, this is near the market rates for those elected officials. I'm sorry, not the market rates. They're below the market rates by about 10%. However, it's also near the base salaries for other department heads at similar levels. So I think it's a nice balance of having a salary that's maybe lower than market, but at a minimum of where we would hire an appointed department head in a similar capacity. So again, it's just for your consideration, but if you like that idea as a format, it is something that other counties in South Dakota use. I bring it forward for your consideration.
Any questions for Carrie? Commissioner Barth?
So Carrie, on those newly elected officials, would they then just get the step? Or would they increase at a faster rate?
It would be entirely up to you. What this is really intended to do is, you know, statutorily, there are minimums, but those minimums are so low.
Yeah.
The intent here is just to give you a more reasonable stat, a minimum for the county to use. And then when you have a newly elected individual, you would need to make the decision about where you wanted to bring them in. It wouldn't have to be at that amount. It just wouldn't be any lower than that amount. And then each year, you would make a determination of how much you wanted to progress them and should, you know, maybe near that market rate.
So a newly elected sheriff would start, guaranteed to start at a lower rate, or at least a lower rate, and then could quickly then move their way up?
You could choose at that point honestly to put him at the same rate as the current sheriff.
Okay.
The intent is here just to give you at least a lower level. If you look at somebody and say, you know, they don't have the experience of one of our current elected officials, we don't think it's appropriate to bring them at the same rate as our most recent elected official. This would just give you a guide for having a salary that would be at least no lower than this point.
I do believe that having someone's favorite aunt or uncle on the job is not necessarily the best thing for our county. And so having qualified people for our other elected official jobs is really important.
Commissioner Benega?
Carrie, could you send us a memo and tell us how long each of these individuals in those five positions has served, how many years of experience they have?
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yep. But that brings me to the next point, is the other part of the resolution does include what we would want to do for our current elected officials. And those rates are the amounts that you set during the payroll budget process.
Any further questions for Carrie? Commissioner Barth?
Are we required to go with what we budgeted? Or, I mean, we certainly, I think, had some flexibility built into our elected official rate. I just am asking if we're required.
To my knowledge, we're not required to do that, but it is what we had discussed previously. Commissioner Benega?
I think if we made any changes, we'd have to make some changes to the annual budget to balance the budget if we increased or decreased any of the salary-related issues. Because I think we are required to have a balanced budget by January 1.
Absolutely.
Any further questions? Comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move. Approval.
Second.
So you have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, oh, do we have roll call votes? Apologize? It even says it right here for me. Roll call vote. Olivia?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. And then if I could just deviate just for a quick second, I'd like to introduce to you Melissa Beek, who just started in our office last week. She's filling Julia Disburg's position.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm very excited to be part of the Minnehaha County Human Resources. I've been in human resources the past, oh, 10-plus years in all capacities, whether it's benefits, payroll, recruiting, employee events. So very excited to continue my HR profession here at the county.
Well, thank you very much for coming this morning. I know we're all very excited that you're here. I know Carrie's particularly excited that you were able to come and join us. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to abatements. And there are none. Notices and requests, there are none. Planning and zoning notices, there are none. And petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So this is now the opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one rushing for the microphone, we'll move on to regular business. Our first item of regular business is a brief presentation on the 4-H programs for 2018. Chuck, good morning.
Good morning. Chuck Martinell, Minneon County 4-H, SSU Extension, Extension Department. Parking lot, by the way, is a little full this morning. I was expecting it to be packed. So, I'm here to talk to you guys a little bit about our program for the last year. For those of you who aren't familiar, our calendar year ends in, at the end of September. Begins October 1st. So I've been trying to meet with you guys, but you guys have been a little bit busy. So just kind of review what happened in the last '17, '18 for the 4-H program. As always, our mission for 4-H is the power of youth to reach their full potential, working and learning in partnerships with caring adults. So our program, once again, has lots and lots of volunteers who work with those kids. All volunteers go through a very, I would say, a very long background check process. So they're all background checked. In 2017, '18, our program had a wonderful year. Last year, our youth numbers were at 625, which is the largest youth numbers I've been, I've seen since I've been here. When I first started back in 2013, we were at 240 kids. So over that time, we have really been growing the program, really recruiting hard, getting a great volunteer base rebuilt, and just keeping consistent staff. So now, the 625 kids we have that are taking part in 4-H, that's not all the kids that do 4-H in the county. Last year, we reached over 10,000 kids through our different programs. Could be Waterfest, Egg Days. We go out and those kids get six hours of education from us, or our volunteers, or our partnering agencies. So that's a lot of people, a lot of things to coordinate, so. One of the other things we want to touch base on is our community service projects. Our clubs last year did over 2,000, about over 2,600 hours worth of community service. And those are different projects in the county, such as road ditch cleanup, park cleanup, could be going to nursing homes, visiting residents there, collecting items for local food shelves. So we do all sorts of things. Our fair projects have increased by 300-some percent in the last few years. So my first year here, our exhibits at the fair were about, around 1,000. Now we're over 3,000. So as their numbers went up, so have kids participating. So, and we've had youth qualify for different contests, shooting sports, and the horse quiz bowl. So in-school programming, as we've worked on developing our program, I'm focusing more on in-school. Nathan is doing the out-of-school. Yeah, we're still collaborating a lot of our different jobs. One of the things in-school we're doing this year, we've done eggs in the classroom for several years. We'll continue with that program, but we're adding butterflies in the classroom to try to meet a new need that there are a lot of schools that won't allow live animals, but they will allow insects. So we can get that same basic life science lessons that we get with chickens through butterflies. The other thing we're working on is a lot of robotics programs. Once again, STEM's very important, teaching those kids those basics STEM mechanics. We want to, once again, broaden those horizons. And so we're partnering with Vex Robotics. We've got our own robotics program going in the county. Plus, we've got, well, Science of Ag is also taking root, and we're working with that too. So those are different areas that we are really increasing our participation in. Summer, fall programming. Nathan can probably speak more about the after-school programs here in a second. But we also do a lot of large events. So we take part in the Sioux Empire Fair, of course. We take part in the Sidewalk Arts Festival. Youth Family Days, Colton Days, Fall Harvest Festival. We go out there and we do a little booth. We give a little activity. And those kids, we don't even count for numbers because we're not giving them six hours of contact. We're only giving them maybe 20 minutes, a half-hour exposure. But that's where we get a lot of our recruitment from, is going out to those events and working Saturdays and evenings and trying to increase our numbers. So I'm going to turn it over to Nathan. He will talk a little bit more about what he's been doing.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nathan Skatson, and I am the other 4-H program advisor for the county in the Extension Department here. And I wanted to just come this morning to talk specifically about one of the programs I've been offering to after-school kids in the county this fall. So there is a polymers curriculum that was developed by the University of Minnesota Extension. And the first set of lessons are for K through 2nd grade. The plan, from what I understand from the folks that wrote the curriculum, is they're going to expand it to older ages as well and keep going. But the curriculum I'm teaching, I'm going to Boys and Girls Club of the Sioux Empire After-School Sites. So those are located in Brandon and Sioux Falls. And then I've also gone to the West Central After-School Care out in Hartford. And what it is, is it's four days in a row that I go out there. And it's giving the kids a basic introduction to science, how scientists work. The first day is having the kids brainstorm, what do scientists do? And I get a lot of people say they, a lot of the kids say that they work with potions. And I'm like, oh, well, it's not potions, but they have chemistry, which is kind of like potions. Anyway, and then we have practice using their senses to talk about how scientists use their senses. Then the next day, we come back and we talk about how we use our senses to learn about the properties of an object. So we play like the I spy game. We have them, I have a baggie that they get that has just random materials in it that they have to sort by properties. So size, shape, color, whether it's squishy, whether it's bendy. And then we also do some experiments to determine properties. So for example, they have to experiment with a plastic bag, aluminum foil, and a paper bag, and determine which one of those is going to be waterproof. So if you put a washcloth in them and then dunk them in water, which one's going to keep the washcloth dry? And then we come back the next day and we start getting into the polymers part. We talk about plastics. We have them sort plastics by their properties and talk about how plastic has a wide variety of properties. You can use plastic for almost anything. But then we touch on how, okay, one of the bad properties of plastic is how it doesn't decompose. And so what do we do? We introduce recycling, reusing. And then the last day, I have a little model recycling factory set up for them so they can use properties, again, to separate materials. So they get a magnet, and that gets all the metal out. And then we add water, because then the plastic floats and they can scoop that out. And then we also have them make a reusable item. They make a wallet out of Capri Sun pouches that they get to take home. So I have been really excited about this curriculum, and I've really enjoyed teaching it to the kids. And I've gotten a lot of positive feedback, anecdotally, from teachers and parents whose kids have been a part of the program. And then the also, the other thing with this is it comes with an evaluative component as well, which is simple because we're dealing with K through 2nd graders. So it's not, you know, a big, long evaluation. But it is something that's been studied and approved through the University of Minnesota Extension. And so I'm excited to be able to report back on that when it's all done. So I think if you have any questions for us, I think that's all we had to present on this morning.
Any questions? Commissioner Benega?
Just a comment. Those are impressive growth statistics. So excellent job, you guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd just like to echo those comments. I think that polymers class sounds like I could learn a lot, and it would be very fun. So I really appreciate the hard work you guys are doing. I know that it is, it is, there's a lot of man-hours behind those numbers you presented this morning, and we really appreciate your work. So thank you very much for coming this morning.
Yeah, we really appreciate your guys' support and all our work, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 11, Consider the Bid Results and Award Recommendations for Project MC-18-0, Structure 50-205-060, Replacement. Really, good morning. How are you?
Morning. Jacob Mars, Engineering Supervisor at the Highway Department. Yeah, we bid this project originally back in June 27th. And between the two bids, we saved $154,000 about, just timeframe. And with the amount of rain, we had contractors, we're a little bit behind this summer. So we rebid it and got a lot better bids this time. There was one multiplication error in the bid resulting in a difference of .34, but it didn't affect who the low bidder was in the project. So we'd recommend awarding to Noel's Drag Line.
Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
Is there going to be a detour for folks going to Baltic coming from the east?
Yes, there will be. Yep, they'll go south down to Highway 122.
Okay, and, but then they're going to have to take gravel?
No, no. There'll be, any detours that we do on an oil road are detoured on an oil road. If we have a project on a gravel road, we want to maintain the same level of service. So that's kind of how we go about choosing our detours.
I'd just make a comment. Thanks for going through the work to rebid it because that made a huge difference in the original bid. I mean, $154,000 is significant.
Yeah, it is. I mean, that allows us to complete more projects, too, if we have more budget, so.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Roll call vote. I even had that highlighted. I forgot already. So, thank you, Olivia. Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Yes.
Bender? Yes. All right. See if I can remember. I have one more roll call vote, Olivia. I'll see if I can remember it. Thank you very much for coming this morning. Okay, that takes us to item 12, To Authorize the Chair to Sign the 2017 Per diem Agreements for Secure and Non-Secure Detention with Our Partner Counties. Jamie Gravitt.
Good morning, Jamie Gravitt, Director of Juvenile Detention Center. Before you is our annual contracts that we have with our partner counties. They've been reviewed by the state's attorney as well as by LSS and their attorneys. And everyone's approved it. We're asking for a 2.5% increase over what we charged last year. And we're also changing non-secure shelter care at LSS to be equal with the same as what it would cost for a secure bed at JDC. We believe that that'll bring everyone onto an even playing field. Minnehaha County has been paying a little bit more than the other counties the past two years. I'd ask that you approve these contracts.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Barth?
Jamie, have the other counties given you any feedback about this? I mean, are...
I've heard nothing from the other counties yet on this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benega?
The question I had was, do you have statistical information from each county that shows what their usage has been that we could look at?
Yeah, I can get that to you.
Thank you.
Just email it to you, or...
That would be fine.
Yes, I can get that.
Just as a point...
To all of us, if that's okay.
Yes, I will.
And as a point of clarification, we're looking at annual numbers. You're looking for utilization on an annual basis. So I know you give us monthly reports, but if you could annualize that, that would be, that would be great.
Yes, I will.
Take a motion to authorize the chair to sign this? If she has time to sign anything?
Second.
It's motion in the second. I don't have to do a roll call vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming this morning. Takes us to item 13, To Authorize the Chair to Sign the 2019 Contract Between Minnehaha County and the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. Craig Dewey.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This is the first in a group of five contracts that are up for annual renewal. The first contract that is for consideration is the Animal Control Contract for 2019. Animal control needs to be provided outside of municipal limits throughout the county. This is the contract to do that, and it is through the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. Looking at the budgeted rates for 2018, they are under the budget limit, so the contract amount remains the same. It is for a total of $47,000, which is split between monthly installments. And then there are, there is an allowance for after-hours response as well as mileage.
Any questions for Craig? Commissioner Karski?
Have we ever exceeded this budget where they do bill us over the, what is it, the $56? Or is this just a flat amount we pay and they take care of everything?
So...
Probably not a fair question for you right now, Craig, because I know you're not with the Humane Society.
Well, if you're asked, so the rate that is billed for after-hours response, that is a flat fee. So if it is after hours, that's paid. Are you wondering if we've ever exceeded the total of the $10,964? Is that the question?
Or the $36,000?
I can look into that.
Okay.
At least, looking over the past five to six years, I have not seen an overage.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
That's what I was going to say.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. So one down, four to go, Craig.
Yes, the next contract is the contract for the Coroner and Medical Examiner for 2019. And this contract also runs from January 1 to January 31. At the process of having budget hearings and approving the budget, there were still some unknowns regarding this contract. So I'll go into a little bit more detail just to provide you some updated information. It ultimately, as different agreements were struck between the coroner and some outside vendors, it results in a favorable outcome for the county. So there are separate fees for both the coroner and medical examiner. And then there's the expense budget as well. And the expense budget is where we're, while there is a larger amount budgeted, which you're seeing, several factors broke in the county's favor to reduce those costs. And again, these expenses for the coroner and medical examiner are on a volume basis. So should volumes remain the same in 2019 as they do 2018 or pretty similar, it will result in this budget using less of the expenses than actually budgeted. And the reason why is because a new portable x-ray machine was purchased through grant funds. And the new x-ray machine is more efficient. And so each x-ray that is produced through this machine costs a lower amount. So the fee per x-ray will decrease. Secondly, while we initially thought that there would be an increase in fees for lab costs, when the negotiations concluded, the results ended up being lower than the 2018 year for 2019, which is certainly a positive given the direction we generally see healthcare costs going. Secondly, there are some other lab savings. The state lab is now moving more quickly to process different tests. Tests that the coroner would submit for alcohol-related tests only are able to be submitted through the state now since they're being processed in under three weeks. And then lastly, costs for decedent transport remain the same as in 2018 and have been locked in for four years in the future as well. So while the total budgeted amount for the coroner and medical examiner would appear to be 4.6% higher, given those factors that broke in the county's favor for the expenses, we should actually see less money being used or a similar dollar amount should the volume remain consistent. There is a 1% increase in the fee for the medical examiner.
Any questions for Craig?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I missed Dr. Snell, though.
Dr. Snell was very generous in providing a tour of the morgue a few weeks ago to me to learn a little bit more about the process.
And he's kind enough to come and speak at our Southeast County Commissioners Meeting tomorrow, so that we'll look forward to that. Okay, that takes us to the next item, item 15, To Authorize the Chair to Sign the 2019 Sioux Falls Metropolitan Planning Organization Agreement. Craig?
This is another agreement that the commission hears annually from CCOG, the Southeastern Council of Governments. And part of what they do is they help coordinate some grants, both at the federal and state level, and really help act as a regional planning effort. So commissioners sit on the UDC Committee as well as interacting with the Highway Department and Planning and Zoning. And so this would be the annual agreement that basically acts as a vehicle for the county to receive different grant dollars.
Any questions for Craig? Entertain a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And that takes us to the lease agreement with Metro Communications. Craig?
Metro Communications provides 911 services to the local area. And they lease space in the public safety building. As that space is being utilized and they continue to grow as well, after reviewing the lease last year, the commission expressed a desire to include a lease escalator to account for inflation. And the agreed-upon CPI index was the Midwest Urban Index. And for the previous 12 months, it was at 2.275%. So that would increase the rent per square foot from $11.40 to $11.66. The total amount of this lease for the 2019 year is $50,091.36.
Any questions?
I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And that takes us to your final contract, Craig, to authorize the agreement between Minnehaha County and Southeastern Behavioral for Mobile Crisis Team Services.
For 2019, this contract runs from January 1 to January 31. And the commissioners recognize the importance of providing timely behavioral health intervention to individuals that can help keep the community safe and prevent law enforcement from needing to intervene as well, causing costs to escalate. So, the Mobile Crisis Team helps contain those costs. And the dollar amounts remain the same as in 2018. So, Southeastern Behavioral Health has paid an administrative fee of $5,000 to administer this program. And then, payments are broken down in 12 monthly installments. The mental health professionals that are on-call receive a rate of $25 an hour, and 35, or 37.50, rather, if overtime is involved. And they are on-call 24 hours a day. The county really appreciates the partnership with Southeastern Behavioral Health, and for that matter, our other vendors in the contracts that we just discussed as well. So, again, this contract dollar amount, provided since it's a volume contract, should volume remain similar in 2019 to 2018, we should see similar costs as well.
Any questions for Craig? I know that this is a program that's produced tremendous results and has been really a great thing for the county and the residents of our county. So, I...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Craig. Karen Muller, Motion to Approve Jail Expansion Change Order Number Two. I have a roll call vote on this, so nobody let me forget.
Thank you, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, before you today is a change order, which we know happens with any type of building project, which is the reason why we, why the county has a little over $2 million in contingency, because we anticipate and know that these types of costs are going to come up. The total today we're asking for approval on is $193,221.21. You'll notice that there are two of those that are zeroed out, that are no cost to us. However, they are listed as change orders, so that we have a complete track of everything that changes in these plans and the process that goes into it. So, I'll just quickly go over them. The first is a precast reveal, which is more of a dimensional change. The precast adjustments at vertical expansion, making sure that the old and new components meet within the new jail and with the existing jail. We have a door that is being added in the administrative areas. We also have a revision on a door, which basically is, involves, they're flipping the frame and the door style around into something else, for a cost of $418. I believe it's the lowest one on here. Excel Energy Relocation Service charges is moving a transformer. And we wanted to come down to exact cost on that, rather than putting that in a GMP, which might have been a little bit of an inflated price. But there's a transformer on Fourth Street. We want to move it away from the front of the building and move it farther to the east. The last number is the big number, and where I want to spend a little bit of time talking about. That is for $178,123. The owners' group has spent a fair amount of time talking about this. In the current jail, we have a security system that was put in when the building was built, which was the early 2000s. We will have a new security system put in the new building. And at some point, that old system is going to have to be brought online with a new system. We also know that technology has changed, and it's at the end of, it's coming into the end of its life. The cost of bringing that onboard is going to be $1.18 million. That's a big number for us to do. We don't know when we'll be doing that, but we are, in anticipation and planning for it, doing the electrical work, because it's a more cost-efficient way for us to do it at this particular time. So, with that, would ask for permission to sign the change order number two.
Any questions for Carol at this time? I think Commissioner Barth and I sit on that committee, and we've slogged through all of this, and we've had opportunities to ask questions. So, if there aren't any questions, it's a roll call vote.
I move approval.
Oh, there you go. Motion in a second. I got so excited about the roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I would just say that we share Carol's concerns about our contingency. And every time we add something to the project that takes away from the contingency, we struggle with it. And it's, it is going to be a long slog, but we're going to get it done.
I agree.
And just as a reminder, first change order was actually a deduct of $333,000. So, change orders are not always a hit in the pocketbook, although they typically are.
Okay, so that was unanimously approved. We'll move on to item 19. It's, once again, Carol Muller, to sign IVC-appointed attorney contracts.
Thank you very much. And you thought you were all done with contracts for today. We, the 1st of May, put in place contracts with attorneys to do the drug and alcohol IVCs. And we're specifically talking about the drug and alcohol IVCs here today. And we had three attorneys. One attorney has taken a different position, and so, had to resign from doing that. We're bringing two attorneys, which was our original goal, was to do four to begin with. So, with that, we have two contracts for you to sign. We were able to negotiate those at $18,000. In order to provide parity, we are providing two amendments with the existing attorneys to raise them from $16,000 to $18,000. This is a win-win for the county.
Any questions?
Move approval.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Barth?
I would just quickly say the Public Advocates Board met, and we elected a chairperson and agreed to meet more often.
Wonderful. Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Takes us to new business. Commissioner Barth?
Sure. You know, obviously, our country lost a great leader with George H.W. Bush. You know, he served in the military, served in Congress, served as an ambassador to China, served as head of the CIA, served as vice president, served as president. And after being president, he continued to serve. You know, when you join the military, you're writing a blank check to your government. And getting shot down, he may not have survived, potentially. You could lose a leg, lose your eyesight, lose your, any part of yourself. And I think that, while saying those things, I would also say that our county has 500-some employees that are serving. You four, my, sorry, Cindy's not here, my four fellow commissioners are serving. And I think that we need to look at each other and say, thank you for your service. And everyone that works in this building, everyone that works in our community this way, I think deserves a minute of recognition, just like our former president does. And I just wanted to say that today.
Thank you. Any other new business? Any old business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll recess for, we'll recess until 9:45. Thank you.